Welcome to the City of Manistee, City Planning Commission, Thursday, July 1st, 2020. Time now is 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. Please take roll.
Commissioners Slawinski.
Here.
Commissioners Smeansky.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner Remberto.
Here.
Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Yoder. Chair Whitliff.
Here. Thank you. Through of agenda, at this time, the planning commission can't take action to approve the July 1st, 2021 agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
By Pam, discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioners Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioners Smeansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes. Thank you. Approval of minutes, at this time, the planning commission can approve the May 20th, 2021 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
Second.
Bob, discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioners Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioners Smeansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes. Thank you. Correspondents? Is there any correspondents?
Oh, yeah. We've got a few.
Okay. Have at her.
All right. I'd like to propose, I'll look closer. I'd like to propose Hampton Inn. It will bring much-needed revenue to our city. The only concern I have is the condition of the roads in the downtown core. If we want to make Manistee a destination, roads must be a priority. As a consumer, one of the first things I notice when a city is in condition of the roads is, when visiting a city is the condition of the roads and the cleanliness of the city. Please take whatever measures necessary to address the roads. We need more accommodations for tourism to flourish in Manistee. Thanks for taking the time to read my letter. Sincerely, Randy Oliver.
To whom it may concern, I would like to express my approval for the beachfront hotel project under consideration at the Lakeshore property. It would be a welcome addition to bring new economic development and investment to the Manistee community as the downtown district is currently lacking in new opportunities for our out-of-town guests. Please consider it a win that investors are considering our humble town for future investment. Best regards, Captain John Milburn, Michigan Sport Fishing Company.
Dear Chairperson Whitliff, I am once again writing to you to communicate my support for this proposed Lakeshore Hotel Project by Suburban Inns. The updated project has even more potential to benefit the City of Manistee and our greater community. I understand the concerns of some of our community, but I feel the immediate and long-term benefits will contemplate, will complement the other projects we have developing in Manistee. Suburban Inns has heard the concerns of the planning commission and our community and made great strides to close any gaps in the plan. They have a great track record of running high-quality lodgings with direct and active oversight of their investments. I urge you to approve this project so that we can move forward with realizing the benefits of the hotel and gain some great partners as members of our business community. Respectfully, Dylan Walker.
This is an email correspondence, but they asked for it to be read in. Hello, Mike. Thanks for the update. The meeting was good. I truly hope the detention/retention pond is deleted from the project as it truly will be nice or ugly and a mess after a while in the natural area. We need that land for public use, not as a deterrent to picnickers, open area for play, and other gatherings. Most people will be using that area as time goes on, so please use one of the DPW options, no matter what the cost. Other property owners have provided these ponds on their own land for such issues. The letter read from Balthewilke was right on and should be reviewed to remind everyone of the results of putting that thing there. Walk the area yourself, and you will see how it will be a detriment to Manistee First Street Beach, Pure Michigan. I heard today that the city will be paid $80,000 for parking across the street. If that is true, how can the city sell in without letting it out for bids? The City of Manistee's zoning ordinance, Article 5, General Provisions, Letter I on page 14, or excuse me, Letter I on page 14, clearly states that no overnight parking of vehicles is allowed in city-owned parking lots. How will you then enforce no overnight parking in the other city lots around there when Hampton Inn gets special privileges? This is just another way to get around the restrictions already in place for that parcel and a stab in the back for the community. I saw the Hampton Inn in Potoski three-story, and there's only one monument sign there. Please don't cave in by letting them hang out their signs at the building, or the top of the building, destroying the beautiful night sky and creating a big distraction for the surrounding residential neighborhood. Even dimming is not acceptable in this location. Again, this is not a highway location. Check out hotelwalloon.com as suggested by another caller. Although pricey and only 32 rooms, I think something more Manistee-like like that could accomplish in the only three stories. Thank you and the commissioners for all your thoughtful consideration on this most important project, setting the tone for future of our most precious asset, Lake Michigan, Lakeshore, and waterfront. Sincerely, Jennifer Teller.
Manistee Planning Commissioners, I've been following the discussions surrounding the proposed Hampton Inn at First Street Beach and would like to express my concerns about this development. The Manistee River cuts right through the heart of Manistee. On both sides of the river are two beautiful beaches. Those beaches are the center of attraction for all. There has been much discussion about the economic benefits of this development, but it would be short-sighted to think that is our only concern. We need to understand that a decision made now will affect First Street Beach and our community for decades to come. Because so much of the natural beauty of our Lake Michigan shoreline is inaccessible to our residents, it is vital that we make the right decision to protect our natural areas for the generations to come. Protecting our natural assets are the key to our future. Can we see the importance of all for the rest of our community and our county? We need to remember that we can develop anywhere, but we cannot create more rivers and beaches. Sincerely, Dwayne Marquan.
All right. This is a letter we received. It did not have a name associated with it, but we did receive it. So it says, "Mike, 203 and 109 Lakeshore Drive in Manistee area are short-term rentals. 203 is operating under the radar."
And then we've got, we've got quotes addressed to each of the commissioner members, but we'll just read the one, and they had, each of you got one. So it says, "Let us live a splendid legacy for, let us leave a splendid legacy for our children. Let us turn that to them and say, 'This is, this you inherit. Guard it well, for it is far more precious than money. And once destroyed, nature's beauty cannot be repurchased at any price.'" Ansel Adams. And that's from Jane Shimkey. And that's what I've got.
That is it? All right. Thank you. Public hearing, we have none. Public comment on agenda-related items. With this, comments will be strictly on agenda-related items. So if you have any handouts, please bring them to me. There will be no interaction between the audience and the speaker, and you have up to five minutes to present. And when you do, name and address, please. None? No, not yet. Okay. We'll go to new business. County Recreation Plan from Networks Northwest. Turn it over.
I feel bad that I have to turn my back to you all, because this message is largely to the public, too, but nice to meet you. I'm Zach Vega. I'm a community planner with Networks Northwest, your friendly 10-county Regional Council of Governments. And I am just here to introduce you to this planning process that we began basically in February and that will run through next February, 2022, to update the countywide Parks and Recreation Plan. So the importance of this is sort of twofold. Number one, as you know, as planning commissioners, we've got the county planning department here. Planning's important. We need to know what we're going to be doing over the next five to 10 years so that we can budget for it and get public involvement and all the sort of things that we enjoy as planners. And number two, and perhaps more importantly for the accountants of the world, it opens you up to funding from the state of Michigan's DNR Trust Fund, as well as from the county foundation, community foundation. So one thing that I want to highlight is really important for anyone that wasn't involved in that previous planning effort in 2016. This is a really unique plan in that I believe it was, and possibly still is, the only countywide plan in Michigan that incorporated all of the jurisdictions within the county. So we have buy-in from every township, every village, as well as the city itself. So we're really excited about that, really excited to work with all of you. I've just brought for you some details of what we'll be going over with the Parks and Recreation Committee, so that if you want to be involved in any way, you're more than welcome. I also have some survey flyers, because we're hoping to get feedback from the public on the survey that we put out to get a better idea of what residents want to see in the community, what sort of uses are not in existence now that they would like to see. And I highly encourage you to complete the survey, because right now I think we have like a 70% response rate from Arcadia, and the other 30% is the rest of the county. So we need more, we need more jurisdictions to take part. So I'll be working with Mr. Samples over here to set up some meetings with the Parks and Recreation Committee, but I just wanted it to be at the top of your minds, in case you wanted to be involved in at any time. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them regarding this process. But just in terms of a general timeline, we're looking to have a draft of the plan that will be the City of Manistee's portion of the plan to you all by September. Then we'll look to get that adopted by the DNR. The deadline for that is in February. We're going to try to get that beforehand. Oh, good. You've already got the handout out there. So, yep, February 22 is when you'll be eligible again to apply for DNR Trust Fund grants. This year, you won't be able to, because the previous plan expired at the end of 2021. So, yep, we'll be looking at that February deadline. And thanks for having me in this beautiful building today.
Any questions?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Is the Trails Plan going to be part of this?
Yes, yes. All of the Trail Planning efforts, I think there were a few of them, those will be incorporated into the appendix, as well as having a couple of pages. If you read the previous plan, it was huge and pretty dense to get through. So what we're going to be doing is condensing that down. All of the Trail stuff will be in the appendix and referenced in the, in the main body as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
The survey, is it going to be a flyer, or are you going to have it online?
It's online. The flyers, I brought some flyers today, but you're more than welcome to print out more from the website, which I almost forgot to mention, is NWM.org. So it's NorthwestMichigan.org/ManisteeRec. It's on the Networks Northwest page under Community Development. So you can take it online. I also have my contact information on there in case anybody wants a paper copy. We're more than happy to mail one out with, and you just have to return it back. So paper or online, both are.
Zach, is it any different from the one that is on the county website?
The survey itself? It's the same one.
Okay. You guys can also go to the county website. It's on the front page of that as well. It's up until, I think, November is what I put it up to. So I don't think they'll need it that long, but.
Looking back at your goals that you had for goal number eight, Community Ice Arena. That came up years ago here, where it was economically very difficult. That's why this area in Mason County went together to build the Ice Arena at the West Shore, with the apartment with college. It was a cost-effective thing, because Manistee's taxes helped pay for that Ice Arena, along with Mason County's. So you might want to rethink the Community Ice Arena thing.
Oh, yeah. Well, we've already done, I think, 15 of the jurisdictions so far, and the goals and objectives updating, and there's a lot of that sort of information in these plans with it just being five to six years ago. Obviously, things have changed, and part of this process will be updating that, that sort of thing.
Yeah, because I probably saw Ice Arena where it was going. I remember all the stuff that went through to get the Ice Arena where it's at now.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach.
All right. Thank you.
Good. 24 Arthur Street, used permit transfer.
Okay. Ken, you can, you can come up here and say a few words to, I'll just, this is Ken Armour. I think, I think we've all met him before, but he's going to kind of explain what his idea is here for this transfer.
The, the guys that are actually applying for are not able to, and they're out of Colorado. They're the same group that I'm working with in the back of Iron Works. So we got an option on the building right now, and we're trying to transfer the special use permit in the same name. It was already issued to someone else, but we have an option on it. They want a position for retail, so it's nothing, nothing that I can think of out of the ordinary. I don't know if there's any questions, but.
Well, the, with this, are you purchasing the house behind the old Jerko warehouse?
The both, yeah.
Both?
The house and the, yeah.
All right.
Is there any historical requirements on that?
There's, there's an approved plan on there, but there's no historical requirements. It's, it's the, it's a plan that's been set forth that.
I included it in your packet.
Right. And then.
The one that got.
This is the actual, sorry, give me one second, guys. It's been a while since I've used this. This is a technology. I don't know why, but trying to still remember how to do it. So that's the actual parcel right there. There's, there's not been anything done on it since you guys have granted approval on this. The plan is still the plan that has to be executed on it. We would like to see some kind of forward progress on this, considering it expires at the end of the year. There is a monstrous amount of work that needs to be done in that parcel to even get it close. So I, you know, I'm kind of concerned that it can't be done in time. So like, you guys are transferring a special use permit that then somebody's going to have to come back in and apply for again. I don't think there's a, a way to extend these right now, unless you guys just come in and do it. So you're running into, you can transfer it, but I don't think the work can be completed by December 31st. You have to combine the parcels, which is a simple thing that hasn't taken place yet, tear down the house, put in a parking lot, put in all those pavers, and build it out as you see on that picture, as well as all the work that needs to take place on the interior. It is, it is a lot of work. So.
Is the building structurally sound?
Yeah, to my knowledge, yeah. And you're probably right. That's a, that's a tight timeline, but they're mobilizing all their resources in the next 45 days to start at the iron works. So it's not a, it's not a small-time operation. So if, it could, it could.
Are you surprised how quick the painting can do, the paver guys can do that kind of work?
I understand. I'm, I'm concerned first on that. The other concern that, that we have expressed in the planning department is, what is the plan? So if this, this project does, you do transfer it, and they grant approval of the transfer, and you possess that property, because it will be in your name, what happens if you don't get a retail license?
You haven't thought through that yet.
Okay. Mick, are there any available retail licenses currently?
I don't believe there is.
So that, those are just the concerns that we were, we were expressing and.
There are, there are some licenses. I know there's, there's medical marijuana licenses available, but I'm not sure about any additional recreational.
How many licenses were granted?
I believe five.
So, so the only question I have is, is why we grant for blanket, like, special use permits with marijuana? If this wasn't to be able to be a retail, would you proceed with it, knowing that it could only be a medical?
They've committed to, yeah. I mean, I have the paperwork.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's the best opportunity. I mean, they're, they're a big-time group, and they're coming in hard and heavy. I know how far along they are on the iron works. So if Ben here, they're coming next month again to, to start. So I don't, I don't see any issues, other than what you're saying. It may drift over the December mark, but I, it might be close, too, because they have the resources to expedite.
The way our life, our life is right now with product shortages, you've probably run into that. Everybody's running into.
Right, right. I'm a construction guy by trade, yeah. It's, it's horrendous. But it's coming around. I mean, the lumber's coming down. Things are, things are coming down, and the life is starting to come back to normal. And if anyone can do it, I'm sure that, at least, I think, if we do have to come back in November, December, I think you're going to see a substantial amount of work done on there where they're fully committed. So I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue.
And that's really our, our suggestion is if, you know, they're going to get asked for an extension, which seems like a reasonable request, that they show significant progress towards this.
Oh, yeah. I would expect that, yeah.
Mike, you said that the parcels weren't combined?
These have never been combined. So as you can see, like, on their, on the right side of that page up there, it says to be combined. So.
Okay. Because I thought it, I thought it had already been taken.
It was, it was supposed to be combined as, as part of granting it. When you guys did it, it was like, combine these and proceed. And the, and by, by no means should Mr. Armour be held to that.
Oh, I know.
It was not him who did not combine it. It was the previous owner. And this is also the property that has, to defend the other person, just because knowing a little bit of history here, this is one a year ago that they had a sale. They didn't, were not able to execute the transfer of the property, and then it, we had to transfer it back. So that's one of the, the, if you guys are to grant a transfer today with signing of the special use permit, you know, we were hoping that we'd actually see a transfer before we, you know, committed staff time to redoing the whole thing. Not that it's a monumental amount of time or anything like that, but I don't know what their option says on, on purchase as well. Is it contingent on getting a retail license, or is it just contingent on the transfer?
It was just contingent on the transfer and the environmental. The last guy I talked to had never pulled an environmental, so I was really surprised on that. So I'm supposed to have that tomorrow or the first of next week. So they plan on moving forward. And they, they, they're a good group. They're into iron works really heavy. And I know they're talking with Zach regularly. They're talking with Heather, the clerk. And so if you have any questions, if you communicate with those guys, you'll, you'll see that they're, they're committed and in. So it made a good marriage with what they're investing in the iron works. At least they'll have a retail, whether it's medical, micro, or whatever. They're willing to at least get their footprint in some sort of retail outlet. So it made sense.
So the group, I think the group was from Traverse City, that?
Right. This was, this was a group.
Environmental study done?
Yeah. I'm apparently not. So my, it's, it's, you know, I can't speak on that, Mark, to be honest with you. I, you know, wasn't overly involved in that. That was more Kyle's area. But I don't think it's a requirement that they have it done as well. On this one, you would have thought so with, with the transfer of it being what it was in the past, and especially in the area. But it was not a requirement at that time. And I think that goes into, I don't know, maybe it should be changed, you know, like. And then this was also the group that attempted to purchase all the properties on options in the district and kind of corner the market as well. So.
All I know is the owner's out of Detroit or something. He's an attorney. That's who I've been talking to.
Yeah. And like I said, it, it shouldn't impact as long as he understands what this plan says and what he's agreeing to. I just want to not only protect us, but also let him know that this is a pretty built-out, an area here, and just understanding that. I think in our district, this was the one that needed the most amount of work in it per the plan that they provided. So as long as you understand, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah. They've reviewed it all. And like I said, they've been talking to the clerk and, and Zach. And, and obviously, I know they have the wherewithal. They're a public company, and I've been working with them for about a year. They, there's no issues. So.
Mike, going into a, a lot of detail, what, what is the brief history on that property?
On this property, I think it was an old warehouse for the train depot that was right there. And there's a residential property to the north. From my understanding, what they, they realized they were not going to have enough room to put in a parking lot for the requirements of the ordinance. They would like to keep the existing building, so they purchased a property to the north, applied for a special use permit with the fact that they were supposed to combine both properties and issuance of, under those. The parcel IDs don't come out correct, like, right away. So you guys granted that with the knowledge that they were supposed to combine them. That has not taken place at this time, though. But that's just kind of a brief synopsis. I think the plan overall, when you guys approved this, this was one of the better ones. I was really excited to see this one. It had a lot of.
Looks a lot nicer than what's there.
Yeah. It also has kind of a placemaking aspect to it as well with the, you know, the monument out front, you know, whether that's a fountain or a statue or whatever. It had the ability to kind of make the district as you enter into it. Some of the other projects that were going on with the potential of like relocating the railroad, and this really had the potential to really make that area pop, you know, the railroad relocation has kind of stalled at this point. But this could, you know, kind of set that, that tone. But like I said, it is, there is a lot of work there.
But it is kind of the entry. I think it's the right team to do it. It's right, you come around that curve, and it's there. So as long as you pick the right team, I think, and I believe these guys are, you can do your own research on them, obviously, on any of their other facilities, and they're top-notch. And that's right when you come around the curve, I mean, you're staring right at it. So it behooves them to do a really nice job, too, because it's the first, it's the first stop in the stretch of any of the retail outlets.
So the only other question I have, and I should have said this earlier, this, this part, your application was to transfer the property into your name, correct? But you keep referring to another entity. So how does that, can you go into that a little bit more detail?
The entity is the same entity. I would just be the owner of the building. They're the tenant.
Okay.
They're the operator and the tenant. They're the same ones that are doing the back of the iron.
So just to clarify for their, their sake, the property is actually yours. So
Correct.
when you say this other entity, it's actually, it's still transferring to you. It's on you to get the work done, not necessarily the entity that's renting from you.
I think, to be correct, isn't the, the SUP would be going in?
It transfers with the property.
Okay. Okay. So then it would be me. Okay. I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah.
And this tenant, is this NMG Michigan, too? That's the tenant?
Yeah. Yeah. Their, their name is Body and Mind.
Bob, you have any questions?
No, I can't think of anything. Just the timeframe is.
Tight. Mick?
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing. I, you know, right from the beginning, I thought that this was one of the better plans that was presented. I do think you've got the best location on that, that strip because of the aesthetics of the building as well. Even though it is, you know, a little bit rundown, I think with, with a little bit of TLC, it's going to be an attractive-looking building. And, and I think it will serve the area well as well as the owner. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, you can get it up, operating and doing business quickly.
Yeah, I don't see any problems, because I know how far along and how much money they poured into architecture, everything along the line for the back of the iron works. So they're all in. And it's 30, 45 days. They're going to start construction. So, and obviously, they want to do this along with it at the same time. It's only going to make sense. So, and they have the, you know, the resources to do it. So it should be a really good plan.
And this company, you know, again, one of the businesses is the micro-businesses are allowable in that facility. So if that is part of their plan, that, that makes it, there's nobody else that supplied for any of those, those requests. And there were three. So chances of getting one of them are pretty good at this point.
It's time to quit, Zach. We got to go open up something.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned that you don't have a contingency plan, since there aren't any recreation license available right now. That's.
They're full aware that it's, there's no contingencies on what class of license they get. They're.
And to just clarify, like, I, I am concerned as well, but if they understand it, licensing.
I want to make sure that, that you understand it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, yeah, I don't want to go backward.
I know what you're getting yourself into.
I have no interest.
Because I know this property.
Yeah. Yeah. Have you ever heard any history on the environmentals?
No.
I've ordered it.
Haven't been any done since I've been in town. It's like 11 years or so, so.
I've walked through it, but I didn't. I mean, visibly, it looks like a great place to clean up, for sure. I mean.
I have heard the bones are good.
The last architect thought that it was a solid building, that they wouldn't, they didn't think that they were having.
They never went in the building. I asked him that question point-blank, and he said he never went in the building.
He only went around it.
He went around it. He never went in it.
Yeah.
That was a question I asked him point-blank in that meeting.
Yeah, that's my only answer.
Shall we?
I was only going to say, in one of, one of these meetings, sometime in the last year, somebody had a statistic about the existing marijuana licenses in these. somebody had a statistic about the existing marijuana licenses in these businesses. On average, like, only one out of five lasts more than a couple of years, something like that. So I would venture to say that there will be licenses probably coming up.
It's a concern everywhere right now, I mean, it's brand-new, it's unprecedented, and nobody knows what's going to happen. I agree with you, if you go to like Muskegon, you see how.
Yeah, I would think they'll turn over, it's like restaurants.
They're saturated.
Concepts don't last very long.
Yeah, but it's unprecedented, it's a new, you know, it's the Wild West, and nobody else, like any other business, right? I mean, the strong survive, so try and get the strongest team and. But it's an opportunity, no one else is in line for it, so.
Yeah.
At least I can hopefully get it done and.
I mean, staff sees no reason not to transfer the, the permit over. I just wanted to bring up these, these, these issues as we see them, not only to make you guys aware of them, but to also let Mr. Armour know, so.
So is the recommendation, if we do grant the transfer, can we write any language in that that?
So we reached out to the city attorney to see if we could set stipulations at this time, like, we, we were not able to get in contact with them this afternoon. So with that said, I would, you know, I would just grant it, and then see if they are able to complete substantial, and then if they come back to you for an extension, then at that time, you guys can address it with them, so.
I think that's a pretty fair, yeah.
Thank you, Mike. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the transfer.
Okay, motion by Mick, second.
I'll second.
By Shelley, any further discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Swinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Approved, congratulations.
Thanks, guys, have a good fourth.
All right, have a good fourth, Ken.
Bylaw amendment.
So this is the exciting one. I think we're all looking forward to this.
We've been waiting.
Yeah, we could do it first.
That's why everybody's here.
That's right. So bylaw, the, the main portion of it was to, to put in there that we will post any correspondence, you know, up until the meeting, you guys will receive it, but we're not going to be reading them in the meetings anymore. Save us a little time. There is a few minor changes in there as well. The city attorney suggested, just clearing, cleaning up some language. It used to be the community development, we want to make sure it's at planning department, things like that. Couple misspellings, things like that. But for the most part, it, it really focuses on the, on the correspondence.
Any questions on this?
No. You know, this is in keeping, this is following basically the same procedures as city council, and it makes sense, it does.
Yeah, I think we were the only ones reading in any correspondence.
What was that?
I said, I think we were the only ones of any commission that were actually reading the correspondence.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's not very common for that to actually be taking place. You know, we reviewed a couple other planning commissions such as Grand Rapids and, and other ones, and nobody's really doing that, so. It's usually pretty common for, you know, you guys get the, the letters that are addressed to you, and then you guys, you know.
Read them.
Yeah.
And I think what had happened previously was there was maybe a letter each meeting, and it was non-issue. But as we can see, when things start developing, it.
We're getting an hour and a half of reading the letters.
Exactly.
We would have read the same letter four or five times, in addition to hearing it read.
So that, and this goes upon your approval, it goes to city council, so they, so they'll get the approval of that, but.
For that, Mick?
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't approve this, then they should go into reading the letters. It's got to be fair to them.
So is there a motion on the bylaw amendment?
Motion, we send it on to the city council for approval.
Motion by Bob, second by Pam, any other discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Swinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Oh, I'm sorry, she's out here, Commissioner Roberto, I looked right at her name tag. Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
It's time to go home, Mark.
Five more minutes. Thank you. Lumen plan approval.
Okay, so for this one, you know, it kind of says in your packet there. Basically, when site plans come in for special uses, the whole having a lumen plan thing, in, in the past, the, the department has just accepted, okay, well, if they say they'll comply to, I think it's section 530.
525.
525, it's close. And, and that was good enough for us. But we have no real way of checking that. I don't have a lumen meter. The, the only thing we have to really hold them to is if there is an actual lumen plan. Because outside of that, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, the engineer looks, but he's not looking at the lumen plan either. We don't know what that light bulb's capable of, that kind of stuff. So the department feels that if we, instead of saying, oh, we'll just comply, the applicant being, saying that, and they actually should prove the, the lumen plan to us, that's, that's, gives us something to hold on to. That gives us some teeth.
I think we've ran into issues in the past with lighting, it's like the tobacco place, and there's really no way for us to go out there and say, okay, yeah, this looks good, or, you know, maybe, without requesting or requiring a, a lumen plan. Me and Zach have, you know, both said, well, you know, we haven't been provided a lumen plan, a lumen meter, so to go out there and measure it, and then, a lot of these are, well, not, not just special uses, but some of them are existing, and it comes into an account, like, if we just allow them to repair or renovate, and then they're violating it, we don't, we don't really have a way of sitting there and saying, we're on the right, or the city property, or without being like on the sidewalk or something like that, and knowing that we are, and saying, hey, you know, well, this seems to be over. Now, if they were providing it upfront, it just makes, it makes more sense as a special use permit, because it doesn't get called in the question. We're not trying to go out and spend, you know, our nights with a lumen meter measuring.
Don't have one.
You know, I heard, I really don't want to do that, so. And then I'm sure, you know, we, if we ask Josh, he wouldn't, or Chief Glass, he wouldn't be too thrilled about it as well. So with special use permits coming in, we just feel it's appropriate to, to require that as part of that packet.
Would this also apply to existing businesses as well as, or just new ones coming in?
Yeah, so if they're changing their lighting as part, you know, that's, it's a modification, but, I mean, it depends on how hard the city wants to be on that. If you're changing out lights or whatnot, and they're modifying an existing light that was approved through a special use permit, well, by all means, they should be coming back before us and saying, hey, these are what the new, the new lights, either through a minor amendment through the planning department, saying, these are what the lights are capable of, here's our light, lumen plan. But without that, it's really hard for us to sit there and say, yeah, okay, I totally know what that light can do. You know, so it makes it very difficult for us to sit there and, you know, we approve something as a minor amendment, thinking that we're doing the right thing and lowering their electric bills, and helping out, you know, everything, and then it turns out to be, you know, a flashlight in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We're not trying to do that, but there's really no way for us to, to sit there and say, hey, you know, yeah, that, that looks good, you know. And, and even when we pass things to, you know, the, the city engineers or whatnot, you know, like, you know, they might miss something, you know, I'm not saying that they're perfect, but.
Or us.
Or us, or they know what the, the latest and capable LEDs are. I mean, they might be very good at engineering pipes and drainage, or, or other things, or landscape, or, or whatever it may be, but just not up to date on the current bulbs that are coming out, you know.
Yeah, the technology's still changing daily on it. Just take a look at some of the new streetlights that are getting put out on the state highways and everything else. And where they hit, used to have the big bulbs, now they're little tiny LEDs, and.
Little bitty things.
And the light, the capacities they've got is amazing. So all those things have got to have stats, or specific specs that go with those lights.
But, right, but if we're not requiring them, and we just say, hey, 524 outdoor lighting requirements, you say you're going to meet them, then by all means, let's go for it. It's, it's really just putting too much faith in a lot of the developers that are coming into town and saying, hey, we're going to do this the right way. You know, the, the days of, you know, you've known the guy for thirty years, you know the family for thirty years, you go, hey, man, that light's a little bit too bright, those days are kind of disappearing for us. We're getting a lot of developers that we know nothing about, they say they're going to do the right thing, they promise the world, and then they come in and, you know, we get lights that are blinding the neighbors across the street. And while we were pretty sure that those are violating, if they weren't made part of the special use permit, or whatever it may be, or, you know, whatever was granted as per stipulations, I think we've learned a lot in the last year and a half, two years, as far as like what, we can't give an inch on anything, and like reading through stipulations. This is just kind of a long time coming, to be honest.
So, so they submit a lumen plan, and I'm just skipping ahead to the bad neighbor that puts the obnoxious lights up. If, if the planning department, or whoever is the body holding them accountable, doesn't have the equipment to measure, how, how does that happen?
Well, I mean, you guys could purchase it, that'd be great. The other aspect of that being, though, at least we can say account, we can hold them accountable, or like, hey, you know, this is a light bulb you said you use, granted, you said that the light only came out to this minute. It just makes our case stronger than when we, if we go out there and, I mean, you can, you can pretty much understand what one-foot candle looks like and what it doesn't. And if you're making it a requirement of it, you can, you know, you can, you can pretty much see it. I mean, it's not. However, if we had to measure it, yes, there should be, like, if somebody really wanted to challenge it, there should be a way to do it. Like, if we were going to revoke somebody's special use permit over it, especially like digital signs, those types of things with sign ordinance, those things can be extremely bright. Then, you know, yeah, the city would probably want to invest in a lumen meter, and then go out there and, you know, we'll put in some staff time for enforcement or, and measure it one night. But really, doing the upfront work as requiring a lumen plan to develop it in the first place, you know, okay. You know, and it's not to say there's not going to be situations where waiving it makes sense, but that's at the zoning ordinance, or zoning administrator's suggestion, and you guys can choose to accept that, you know, when they come through with a special use, like, hey, we really don't think that this is going to be a requirement because of this, this, and this. They're complete cutoff fixtures angled back towards the building, like, we don't anticipate that, whatever it may be. Or it's, you know, a small light, whatever, they're only adding this, these are other additional lights, we really can't hold them accountable, whatever it may be, so. There are times where waiving it would make sense, but.
Go ahead, Jeff.
If it's appropriate, I, I'm Jeff McCall, the Public Works Director. I've worked in an engineering firm for twenty years, so I've done lots of these site plans. For a, when a commercial development comes in, for them to do a lumen plan is very, very easy, and it doesn't cost much money. So I think this is a great idea for you. If they're going to lay out commercial lights, they've got somebody that's designing those, and for them to do the proper spacing with those fixtures, it's very easy to get that output. And so you're not going to need to close those a lot. One of the examples that always stands out to me as I drive by is the M S P Hotel. That would have been a wonderful opportunity to see a lumen plan before they changed the fixtures on the outside of that. So I support that.
Thank you, Jeff.
So DPW's budget is going to.
He said he was going to enforce, too, I heard it.
It's that expensive piece of equipment. I know that I used to use lumen meters in photography classes, and they were not expensive then. I'm sure that there's got to be commercial ones that are reasonably priced.
There's probably an app for it, to be honest with you.
Your Apple phone.
Right.
Jeff, you know how much one would run?
I, I do not, but I can't imagine that they would, it's not so.
I'll bet that they're probably under a hundred dollars for a, I don't know how technically.
I, I imagine, as long as you guys got a good one, if you're doing enforcement with it, then I think you'd be fine.
Calibration up on it.
Right, it, but at the same time, we're technically subcontractors for you guys, so that's requesting equipment outside of it to do your enforcement, it's rough, so.
I'm over the vice chair does that.
Man, we'll put it right in your yard, Mark. We'll test all the light to get in your front yard.
Five hundred bucks. Five hundred dollars.
I mean, you can, you can go, I, you know, just going through, you can get one all the way up to two thousand or something, but mid-range, it looks like it's five hundred dollars. So, yeah, I think that'd be a good investment.
Any other questions?
And I wish we had it a couple of years ago.
Yes. I think you were speaking on one project?
Yeah.
There's, there's several projects that have come through the, as far as this outdoor sectional requirements, like, that have used that as a blanket, like, yeah, we'll meet it, and they've accepted it in the past. Because there's, they're requiring, they're stating that they'll meet it. But there's projects I've called in the question on this, and I've just been like, well, you know, is it, is it an issue or isn't it? So there is one in general, but that, that, I feel like we all learned a lot from, and hopefully we'll get to address it sometime again, but we'll see.
We hope, so. With that, any other questions, or a motion on lumen plan approval?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Pam, second?
Second.
Nick, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Swinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Chief, Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you.
No, I don't have my water here. No, I don't.
Uh, next, lot line adjustment.
So I'll preface this by saying that the Land Division Act is very tricky. To say the least. So some of the things that our department recently ran into and kind of sparked this is, to do a lot line adjustment right now in the city, there is no form. And it's been done, and we only find out about it because equalization in the county says, hey, what's going on here? So we're trying to get ahead of ourselves, we're trying to get ahead of it, any issues there? Two, two landowners can, can move that parcel line, and, and I'm sure, you know, Bob, you could probably explain this better than I could, but.
It happens a lot, more than you know. You'll get two landowners jinxed to each other, and somebody wants to put a building here, but they don't have enough room for their setbacks, but the neighbor next door says, well, I've got this whole backyard, and you have this vacant, I'll trade you this part of this land for this land, so you can be required for it. And, and the two come together, and they'll come tell the surveyor, say, here's where we want the line, we'll write a new description for them. It's, it's a, I've done hundreds of them, it's really not difficult. The other part comes in is when they don't follow through and file the new descriptions. They don't file the new descriptions, that never happened.
Yeah, and then we run into issues with zoning, so like, you guys have minimum lot size requirements, not to mention setback requirements. So if we're never being notified through the zoning department that this is taking place, you could literally be a zone, a lot line that's too small, do a lot line adjustment with your neighbor, get it recorded, come back in and say, look, I have enough room, a year from now, change it back, and we would have no clue. So like, and then the other, the other problems we run into is, you have a lot of lot of records here, which, you know, are certain criteria. One of the questions we ask equalization is, when's the last time this property line description changed? Well, if it's not before the ordinance, it's not a lot of record. So if you're doing lot line adjustments with your neighbor, and you're not aware of it, you have a vacant property, you meet the requirement. The instance Bob talked about was there's, before the meeting was, like, there's nine-point-eight or eight-eight acre lots, or something like that. So there's a five-acre minimum on those lots to be able to build. You do a lot line adjustment with your neighbor, you suddenly have two lots. So then you're, you can split them and build them both, and then you do a lot line adjustment the other way, and now he splits his, and he can do both, and neither one of those should have been allowed. So you're. And then if you're, yeah. So there's not really, they're not tracking these efficiently, and a lot of people don't know that, you know, they, they might not be meeting zoning after they do this. This happened in Arcadia recently, there was a lot line of, a lot of record. His neighbor wanted to build on his lot next to him, said, hey, I'll trade you this for that. Both of them are no longer lots of record and no longer buildable under their ordinance. Because they, they changed their, their property descriptions, and it was after the, the date of the ordinance. So it makes it, you know, you're, you're only a lot of record until you're, you're changing things. So and it says, well, if you're, you're doing it, you know, by, by all means, like, we, we try to work with you, but if you're shooting yourself in the foot, it's, it's very difficult, so.
What it comes down to on a lot of that, when they do those things, it extinguishes the original descriptions.
Yeah.
It doesn't exist anymore, so anything that was grandfathered in is gone. So, if the new lot doesn't meet the minimum requirements, you're in violation, so.
I mean, it, it sounds silly, but it, it is the way that the law is written, we have to enforce it that way, so. Really, we want to be able to track these, so, you know, before, we were just having to do a land division form along with it, which, you know, is all right, but there's really nothing in there that says that they have to do it. You know, we're, we're bringing this to you guys, kind of explaining it before we put in the work to see if there's, there's first of all, support for it. To say, hey, yeah, that makes sense, which a lot of other entities, Georgetown Township, we actually, I think you guys got their form maybe?
It's Clem Lake.
Oh, you got Clem Lake, okay, there's other townships out there, Georgetown has an excellent one, right outside of Grand Rapids there. And we're looking to adopt that more and more, as we've noticed that, since we've taken over not only land division, but zoning in other areas as well as the city, this is, this is a, a problem countywide. So, you know, we're trying to address that, you know, before, you know, more people do the wrong things, so.
And, and we've worked on this, on this forum, we've had this conversation with the city assessor, with the city attorney, and, and we're all in agreement that this is going to help everyone keep better records of what's going on, not only for zoning, but for assessing, for any legal matters that might come over to George, who knows, but... And then the city assessor Molly also suggested the hundred dollar fee for this line, and then that's not something you guys said, or that we said, you know, that goes to council and everything else, but that was her recommendation, is that's pretty standard across most of the townships that she works in, so.
I've seen a lot, this stuff has been going on in the state for well over 30 years, they've been trying to fix this problem. It goes back to the late, or, or early 19, mid 1900s, when people started dividing up land as lot as they can, without worrying about any zoning or any requirements, once all the requirements came in, that's when all the Murphy showed up.
Yeah, there's, the Land Division Act, the, the mid, I think it's 1950s or 60s, I'm...
Seventies?
The original one was in the 50s, but they've got another one that came out in the 70s.
That's a, yeah, so, little off, sorry guys. It says in there explicitly that like lot, yeah, and it says, you'll, you'll talk to an assessor, and you'll ask eight different assessors, like, how to divide a land up properly, and you'll get eight different answers, it's scary. So, one of the things in there in the Land Division Act, though, it says lot line, or lot line adjustments are not land divisions, so therefore, don't have to check with zoning in there. So, there needs to be an extra control put in place by you guys, or by the local entity to say, hey, we realize that that's not a requirement of the Land Division Act, however, you know, we would like you to check with zoning when you do these, and here, as well, so that, it, there is a little bit of say.
Protects the landowners.
It does, it does both, so.
Well, right, I mean, if you, if your intention, just like you said, if your intention is, you think you have five acres, but you have 4.44, now all of a sudden, you can't build on it.
Right.
It happens a lot, there's a lot of places like that, that's where some of the variances come in. Where they can, special cases, grant variances for stuff like that, but they're a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and variances, most, most of the time, just to be honest with you, shouldn't be granted. You know, nine times out of 10, a variance should never be granted, and it's a, it's only in very unique cases, so like, money is not an option in a variance. So, like, if it's going to cost more for the landowner, and that's what their hardship is, that's not a hardship. It's, or, you know, it's, it should be on the property, not on the, the landowner, so like, their hardship can't be, well, my family, I need a bigger house, so therefore, you should grant me a variance, well, no, that's, that doesn't work either, that's not a hardship provided by the land. You might say that, like, hey, the only build of...
Getting eight different answers for one law?
Right, well, yeah, but that is part of it, but, the other issue on like variances is like, you know, like, if there's only one buildable area on a parcel, that might be a hardship that you would grant, you know, like, okay, I understand that your only buildable area is here, we're going to grant your, you know, like, you can go into the setback to meet, you know, that, to be able to build within that. So, those are like the ones that should be granted, but most of the time, and the ones that are granted often, should never be granted. So, just to let you guys know.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
I, I thought there was a city ordinance that required that any of those adjustments be completed through explicit combinations, they could approve by the planning commission, and then ultimately have to be approved by city council.
Divisions and combinations, yes, but not lot line adjustments.
That follows under a different category completely.
Oh, is that different?
Well, the Land Division Act says that lot line adjustments are not combinations or divisions. So therefore, you're, you're basically not able to hold them to the land division or combination. I understand what you're saying, and, and I've, that's the exact reason that we, we came forward and said, hey, this is, this is something that needs to be taken care of. But yeah, it is absolutely like explicitly stated in there that they're not, so they don't have to follow the requirements of it. And that's why there needs to be an extra control, so, and a lot of these, you'll see with, like, land divisions and stuff like that, there, there's actually a lot of things that you, that aren't done, that need to be done, like, so if you divide your land, you're actually supposed to say how many splits that you gave that land after you've divided it, which is commonly not recorded. So, like, you have a 40 acre parcel, you're allowed one split, which this gets really complex, and I always have to check the chart to check it. But basically, if you have a 40 acre parcel, you're allowed one split to allow, to be able to do it, just one free split is what they call it. And then you're allowed like maybe 12 additional splits after that, depending on how old it is, and then after so many years, you're allowed additional splits on top of that. But if you split it, then for each split in property, you have to sit there and say, how many of those additional splits did I grant that property? And then, you, so if record keeping's not good, which oftentimes is not.
It's, it's a mess. It is, it is a mess.
And this is why, when you ask eight different assessors, how many splits does this property have? Well, I didn't, you know, well, when was it last split? So, you got to ask the right questions, and then the record keeping has to be right.
We have a subdivision, we've got to put, do the same thing with the splits, and we have to put the road front, how much road is to these fronts and ends. For so many splits, three, more splits, we have to establish ingress and egress.
Yeah, you can't land lock a parcel, all kinds of stuff.
It is a landmine to go through. The thing that, the thing is when they bring condominiums, they don't have to go through the subdivision act, that's the problem.
Right, and that's why you see like planned unit developments also skirt it. You know, so, there's, there's ways around it that they, that they've come up with, be, basically because it's so complex. And it's a nightmare to deal with, so, or if you subdivide a land and you do a subdivision, like with the subdivision control act, like you have plaits, like plat maps, okay, you want to, you, you've got a nice platted area, and you, you're next to an unplatted area, and you're like, well, I'd like to purchase that and add it and combine it into my property, oh, you can't do that. Because you can't combine a platted area and an unplatted area.
Is the Land Division Act federal?
It's a separate plat.
Yep. Is it reviewable? Yes, the Land Division.
No, it's a federal.
Uh, I think it's state, isn't it?
State, state of Michigan got that.
State of Michigan, yeah.
There's other states that follow the same guidelines.
They're, they're, they're pretty common, it's a crazy thing, but, and it's really not well done, I'll be honest with you, but.
In school, we have to take two semesters of understanding this process. So, it's, it's a headache for, for these guys, and I had to sit through two semesters of school.
There's probably not a big lobbyist group that goes to the state legislature and says...
No, there's not a huge lobbying group, no, I mean, it, it is...
It's not getting any attention in the nation.
Here's another one for you, that not a lot of them are aware, so if you know section lines within the townships, right? So, you have two properties that are separated by a section line, right next to each other, can't combine them.
Yep, that makes sense.
You can run a plat on them.
Because there's two cities, yeah. Two, two taxable entities.
Is there two different townships?
The plat net? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it is an absolute nightmare, and really, what we care about is, if you do a lot line adjustment, are you meeting zoning? So we can catch it prior to you doing a lot line adjustment that you didn't, were not aware of, or that, you know, you're breaking a lot of record that you weren't aware of, or that you're both meeting zoning if you do the lot line adjustment. Like, if you, if you had two parcels that met zoning, and your neighbor's like, hey, you know, I, we both owned these properties for 50 years, my fence is one, you know, right on the property line, I need to maintain it, can I borrow, or buy, borrow, buy five or 10 feet from you before I sell, so I can maintain my fence, well, now, one of them becomes a non-conforming parcel, which isn't allowable. And then the other one, you know, is fine, but, you know, you've made a, a non-conforming parcel, so, you know, and then the, it's all, it's, it's further compounded by the fact that the city doesn't require surveys on point of sale.
I know, I had to pay for one, so, but...
You had to pay for one?
Well...
It's not required by zoning or the city, so.
If I wanted one, which I did, then I had to pay for it.
I mean, it's very common in this day and age, especially in municipalities, to have a survey required as part of a point of sale, and then transferred with the property, so that, like, let's say you purchased property, you build a new shed, you would transfer your original survey with it, or there'd be a new one done, and then it would say, hey, and then that way, they always have a record. Some make you update them at point of sale, so that way, it's always current. But right now, it's not even a requirement for properties in the city, so, a lot of these lot line adjustments are, are come to find out that, why you were a lot of record within the city, especially with the newer people who are used to having surveys done, move into our communities, and they're saying, well, I'm going to have a survey done, in fact, this one happened, I think, two years ago. A woman came in, found out that her neighbor had built over 20 feet onto her property, and she was like, hey, I would like, I would like to do a lot line adjustment and sell you. Luckily for them, they had the space to do it. They came and talked to us, and I was like, well, yeah, you can do it this way, and, but you, you're lucky you had the space, they're both on double lots. So, they're, they're fortunate, but not everybody's fortunate, so, you know.
So how does a lot line adjustment form create efficiencies either for the county, city, or landowners?
So, when you came in, you fill out the form for a lot line adjustment, you'd, you'd sit there, and one of the first things that's going to say is, okay, well, you know, let me see your property description that you guys are coming up with through your surveyor. So, we'd look at it and say, okay, the surveyors will say, this is how much acreage is on here, here's how many square feet, there's how many square feet here. First thing we're going to say is, does it meet minimum requirements for, for the parcel sizes? And then if they do, then we'll look at other things, like, okay, well, how far are the buildings away, like, from these new property lines?
Okay, so people will know right away, if they can follow through with their plans, just by...
It's just a check from us, and then like, and then if we say, okay, we sign off on it, send it to the assessor, who's going to check to see parcel, and make sure they're, like, you're not combining two different subdivisions or plaits, you can't do that as well, that's another thing, that's fantastic. So, just, just things like on that, but on lot lines, again, they don't have to meet it, so, you know, but you, you still have to look for that one. Because they, they're just not allowed to do it, so, there, there are things on here that we're trying to catch and just make them aware of, like, hey, guys, you really can't do it. You need to, you go down a different avenue, or whatever it may be. But right now, those checks aren't taking place, so, you know, they do it, then they find out later, like, oh, wow, they really couldn't do it, or there might be a different problem with, let's say it's outside of a township, like, you, you live right on the township line, and you're like, hey, I'm going to just take, you know, five feet, or 100 feet, or 20 feet, or whatever it is, off of this back thing, and we'll do, I'll buy it off you, and that's fine, here's your money, and you, you do a lot line adjustment, and then it turns out, you really can't do it. So, you know, your parcel never got recorded because you couldn't do it, they deny it, the assessor does, and you don't really control the land or own it.
As long as you stay inside the township boundaries, you're usually pretty good. Section to section within a township, you're pretty, you can get away with it pretty well.
So this requirement would be helpful.
Pardon?
So this requirement would be helpful.
It'll streamline things for these guys quite a bit, so it's, it's also going to make it, the, the people who want to do it more aware, protect them.
I don't know if it's streamlined, because right now, we're not doing the checks.
Get a hundred dollars every time.
Well, we don't, we don't get anything, but.
Filling out that form is going to make them think, and some of the stuff, they're, they'll probably, as time goes on, they'll develop some ways, things, little things to look for on the form, if this don't look quite right, okay, what's going on?
Right.
You know, there's a lot of it, it's going to prob, the first few, they're going to have a lot of questions on these guys' will. It's a learning curve, but once they learn the little tricks of it, which ta, which will take them a while, I guarantee it will. And once they get it, it's going to be not that difficult, they'll make themselves a little cheat sheets, and they'll be awesome.
Yeah, Michigan State provides a really nice cheat sheet on like splits and divides, but lot line adjustments, not so much, that's more just us checking it over and knowing what to look for. It's, it's a pretty big nightmare, honestly, but at the same time, seeing one or two people get burned on it, it, it is one or two many people to see it, so. And especially when you know other entities out there are doing the same thing, and protecting their, their citizens, or, you know, from having, from making a mistake prior to making it, and, you know, it's pretty common for us to, to look something over and say, okay, I see a problem with this right away, hey, let them, let them know, and then hand them back their money. We, you know, we only, we're only going to take it if it's actually going to go through, so.
See, in different jurisdictions that the word survey work in, people ask me, well, what's the minimum requirements? Well, I advise not to contact your municipality, because every municipality is different. It's just the way it is, and was it, happens here, may not apply to Parkdale.
Right.
So, you can't just depend on, you got to contact the agencies that are involved to find out what your requirements are.
And you, Nick, you got any questions?
Well, you know, again, the only, the only thing that I see in here is that, you know, the, the, the hundred dollar fee, I just, a little bit concerned that we're, we're making it a revenue generating process instead of trying to do the right thing. So, I like the fact that you had mentioned that, you know, if it wasn't going to go through, we're not going to take your check, kind of thing. If it's, if it's an obvious, well, you can't, you can't get there from here. But again, I, I think it's important that if you're going to have a fee, that you can justify why. Because taxpayers are already paying salaries, right, we're already paying for some of this process, so, any new fee, I think there has to be some justification that this is above and beyond, I don't know that that's, that's so much ours as, as the city, but, but, but I'm always concerned, you know, when a fee just happens to be a hundred dollars, right?
I think that's set by city council, isn't it?
Yeah, so, Mick, Mick, you're going to get a say in that.
Like I said, in my opinion, just to...
So you're thinking like 200, 300?
Just to actually have a, you know, solid justification as to say, you know, this is X amount of hours worth of work, and that's why this is above and beyond the normal work.
So land divisions and, and such, I mean, they're going to require along those same kind of lines of work, and you guys are charging, I think, a hundred dollars for them right now.
200 for splits.
200 for splits, so, I mean, it's right in line with what you guys are, and it's pretty common for a hundred dollars per splits, even, you'll see that even...
It's actually fairly cheap.
Yeah, you'll see that even in like Fairleigh Township, and, you know, some of these other rural townships are only charging 100, so. You, you also see like with splits, you'll see, you know, 100 or 50 for additional splits, because once you've done the work, it's pretty much, you know, you're like, okay, I've looked at it, you have this many splits, okay, you did this, 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 this.
Well, because you have to provide the plan anyway, right?
Right, they have to do all the ser, the surveyor provides, we won't even look at it without that, because there's no way we can, we can even, and, and even with your combinations, you guys are, you guys are requiring a, a survey for combinations or anything like that, so, you can't just say, hey, I want five feet, without showing me what it is, because now you're going to be taxed on that five feet. So, you have to bring that description to the equalization in the assessor's office, so they can, can then tax you and take it from your neighbor and say, hey, you'll no longer be taxed on that five feet, which we all like, so.
I'm sure the description from attorney is an attorney.
No?
No, because attorneys, they still think a half mile is 2,640 feet. If I find a half mile is 2,640 feet, something's wrong. There, there is no such thing, you'll never find, very rarely find a half mile in the property description of 2,640 feet.
Well, not, not at the 45th parallel.
Considering the original survey was done with a 66 foot long chain with compass. So, whatever was done back in the 1800s, that was gospel, everything else is based on that. That's why you'll see some hot ball shaped townships and sections every direction possible.
So, so.
Yeah, I've got one section that's only, the half mile is only 1,400 feet. And that's in Mason County, so, that's, depending how sober the guys were. Yes, it is, it is common to find whiskey bottles at section quarters. Even today. Chew, chewing tobacco cans, and I can, I know which surveyor by it when I see the chewing tobacco can.
So, we, we kind of felt there would be a little bit of conversation on this one before Zach brought forth, like, the actual form that we are suggesting we use. We also wanted to work through it a little bit, so maybe next month. wanted to work through it a little bit, so maybe next month, he'll provide something that is, is more official looking. And if you guys have questions and wanna research it a little bit before we bring that form forward, by all means, look at the Land Division Act and-
Have fun.
And-
Same, what he just said. So, here's a, in your example, parcel acreage after adjustment, with, with the parcel after adjustment.
Mm-hmm. So that's after you buy, take the ten feet from it, and then after, what is your square footage?
Yeah, but what if it's wrong to begin with, and now, all of a sudden, you've measured it, and it's correct?
Well, he's still gonna go out and measure, like, existing, and then he says what it is, but like, and then like, you know, what we're talking about, like, the forty-fifth parallel, so the earth's oval, and if you know mapping, then if you walk five hundred miles, you know, east, five hundred miles north, five hundred miles west, five hundred miles south, where do you end up? And some people will say, well, you end up in the same spot. Well, you don't.
No.
You know, because the earth's not flat.
Down to county line, that is the second correction line of the state. Every township is a, is a correction line. All the area that's in the survey, land before, is at the north end of the area. So, you'll see, township's at Mason County, the north end, there, instead of a mile, north and south, they'll be anywhere from a mile and quarter to a mile and three quarters. You get to township thirty north, north of Traverse City, up that way, you're gonna see the same thing. You get down by Muskegon, where the first correction line, you see the same thing. That's where they meet up.
But somebody else does this for a living.
Thank God for Bob.
Yes.
That's what we get paid for.
Well, is, if there is no more further discussion, is there a motion on the lot line adjustments?
So we don't necessarily need a motion, we're just looking for some support on it.
Yeah, we're just, we, you know, we, more of an understanding, really, that you guys understand that, like, hey, we're gonna be bringing this forward. We understand it's not, you know, why, why it's needed is not like a, you know, hey, yeah, let's go for it right now, but, and then when we bring the form back through, we can explain and step through it. So like, if you were applying for it, we can kinda walk you through it, and so you can say, okay, that makes sense, and then approval for it.
Hey, Mike, if you and Zach run into problems of figuring some text, putting the thing, I'm willing to help. Probably if you contact Pat at Spicer's, he'll be willing to help.
Right.
You know, and between the two of us, we got resources, we can contact the state, state society surveyors-
Right. Well, we can develop it, and then we can ship it on over to you, Bob, and then if you wanna review it, that'd be great for us, because I mean-
I suggest you get the Pat also, so it's two sets eyes looking at it.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Because Pat's the county surveyor right now.
Yeah, he's the re-mailing guy, yeah, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll kick it out to both of them and see if they have any suggestions. So you and Pat. And then, we're probably gonna steal a lot of it from other entities that have already done it, to be honest with you, so.
There's no sense in reinventing the wheel?
No.
There's a lot of good stuff out there.
All right, good. Move along to old business. There's none, public comments, communication. This time, the chair will ask if there's any public comment. It'd be limited to five minutes. And first up is Steve.
Agola.
Agola, yes. Okay, sorry. So if you'd like to come to the podium?
Okay.
Name and address, and if you have a handout?
Yeah, I do. I, all right. I have some handouts. I don't know if you guys have any for our, uh-
Just really?
I guess I can give, uh, do we have these on the board, or, I don't know. I'm just gonna give the old narrative and, uh, you know, if you could give-
Yeah, they, I have, no, no, no.
Here, this is, uh- Just a short one. Here's, this is, uh, kind of an idea. I have, I purchased a building at three-fourteenth Sibbene Street. It's on the northwest corner. And this is, um, I had the plan, it had been revised a little bit. So, I'm here because I want, I got the building, I preserve, I've been a builder for forty-eight years, and I came out of retirement, the building called me out to fix it up. And I wanted to do what's best for Manistee. I'm not, you guys, when I was up here, I talked to Mark Miller, and everybody said they wanted housing. And I, I didn't, I was just gonna fix the building up, but the building, the more I looked at it, uh- This is a little background. You got your hand, you know, things you need. You gotta make kind of that. This is, uh, this is my back, this is a background.
Oh, yes.
You know, W, thanks for sharing.
And I, you know, I'm here because, uh, I, I, when I first looked at the building, I had Mike and Rob.
And I just wanna remind the commission, this isn't canvassing, we're not making any decisions or anything like that.
We do ask that, you, we, we didn't know we had handouts, or we probably would've included them in packet, but typically, in a, in a canvassing, you guys can receive information like this. But-
Oh.
Please give them a little extra time, so that he can, he can talk about it a little bit, and you guys can respond a little more, so.
I mean, we can, we can meet again, you know, I just, I wanted to give that to you, I didn't know, but I, I haven't done this in a long time, so. And it's a little different everywhere you go, but I really liked being up here in Manistee. And the day that I first looked at the property, I met, I met with zoning, and Rob and Mike were there, and they said that it was on a key street. It was a mixed-use building, and, I don't know, called to me to, to fix it up. The more I looked, it was filled with furniture, all this junk. It was Dale and Sue Picardi, Picardi, I think that's the way you pronounce it? Picard- Picardi, uh, the old, uh, that was her building. And I met with them, and they told me a little bit of history. I'm from Michigan originally, from down south. And I plan on staying here in Manistee. Part of the, part of the building will be a unit for myself. And the, so they said they wanted residences. I met with Mick the other day, and Mark, and, you know, so I kinda wanted to get an idea, if you guys, what are your, what are your thoughts on this? And, and the parking, that was, there was three things that I think are, are big, our big issues is that it's the size of it. We're gonna expand the footprint, we were gonna expand the footprint to the farthest point, which is fifty feet, roughly, from the warehouse space. It leaves, I think, a twelve-foot, a little over twelve-foot green space or easement on the north side of the property. There's trees there, and, and we're just gonna keep the same length. It's already, I think it already exceeds the,
Maximum lot coverage?
Whatever the code, whatever the, you know, zoning, it already exceeds its grand, kinda grandfathered in. But we figured, you guys, you know, I remember when I first came up here, I was trying to get a hotel room. And I couldn't believe how expensive they were, and they were booked. And I had, you know, I, I had to go to Cadillac, and to commute, and it was, and then I tried to find a place to rent, and it was very difficult. I, I, I still didn't find one. I still, I'm still looking. But the place is, gives you a little description. I met with, I did the Oprah's certificate with that, Taylor, and, and that was, we met over at Ramsdale Theater back in the fall. And that went, that went well, and so it helped me with the, with the tax break. But one of the things are, is the parking. That area, that, it was used, when I was there, when I first looked at it, it was industrial. Actually, they had four-eighty-three phase going into the building, and they had, they were doing upholstery. They had a big stamping machine and all this stuff. And they were, I think that was the last thing they were doing there. They had a paint booth, uh, yeah, they were doing, there was all sorts of stuff. But there was, the place was loaded with so much stuff, that I really couldn't take, really, it was confusing. You couldn't take a good look at the building. So, my first thing was to try to get rid of some of this stuff. And, and that's what I did. And, and I've got my, I, I have a old team of architects that I used, they're good friends of mine, out of Chicago, S Squared Architects, and, and an engineer, Robert, Robert Angaroni, out of San Martano and Sons. They used to be on LaSalle Street, big, big outfit. They've taken a look at it, at the building. And the building is structurally, the footing and foundation area, about two feet up, you know, that old area that is settled, the wood, you know, that. So whether, rather, you know, the idea is that this, this building, we can, I can use it to maximum use and put some residents in it. And I thought it would be a good idea. The parking, that's, that's been used for parking since, like, before the turn of the century, that little strip there. I mean, I guess they, it's all broken concrete on that area. So part of it is the right-of-way, I guess you guys call it the right-of-way, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually city-owned property, so-
Yeah, city-owned.
Even if, if-
And so we thought, you know-
If a special use permit came in-
Diagonal, or actually, I was thinking about it later, we may have enough room to go ninety degrees and get an extra couple of spaces in, at a night, you know what I mean? And it'll, it'll allow a few more spaces, I think. The floor plan on this is gonna change. I talked to Mick a little about it, and Mark, and, and we're gonna get rid of the locker room, and the sauna, and all that stuff in there. And, and probably that back wall, Mick mentioned, we kinda, he gave me an idea, and I could put possibly five, kinda tiny, stacked to sixteen foot, at sixteen foot high. You can almost do a little loft, you know, small, ground floor with a little loft. I think we, it'll be seventy feet there, that we can put five units in, smaller, you know. I, they may be too small for this, for the code, four, four hundred square feet or so. And I'd have to talk to you guys about that, whether, you know, this is something, but it would allow more housing.
So, Mark?
Minimum's five-fifty, isn't it?
Uh, for the minimum lot size over-
Or apartment.
Apartment size, I think it's five-fifty, I think that's correct.
Okay, well then we'd get four.
Yeah. It's not that you couldn't, depending on how this came in, it would, you know, so.
So it, it just, I guess the, the big issues are the parking, the, the size of the building. I haven't talked to the neighbor to the north of me, I'm gonna talk to him the next day or so, to see, because that's, he's probably gonna be the worst one. I've talked to the one across the street, which is Mike, who bought the, I guess they call it the candy, the candy store place?
Yes.
And he said, he doesn't mind at all. I haven't talked to the other neighbors. Is the height, the multiple, I, you guys mentioned planned unit development, I guess that's how it would be zoned. I thought it was just gonna be variances, but after hearing Mike tonight, I, I, I thought that's typically how we used to, you know, when, when I gone in before, on zoning, on other things, you asked for a variance for this, and a variance for this. So the height is, we would like to go three stories, with a flat roof. There's not gonna be much landscaping, the roof is gonna be landscaped, it's gonna be a green space. We're trying to make this an energy efficient building. We're, I, the deal is, it'd be, I don't wanna have to keep going back and forth to my architect, it keeps costing money. I'm kinda getting ideas, that we can get an idea, if you guys are, the, the look of that building, is it just a box right now? That's not how it's gonna look. You know, we're trying to make it look, look a little more Victorian in the city, maybe a modern side. And, and the building, we're gonna, you know, have to gut it, and then really assess it, the lumber, and, and see what's, see what it's, see what's set. And the yard to the north of it, to the, to the north and to the east, doesn't get much sun, right now, even with two stories. It's really two and a half stories, it doesn't get much sun there. So, the landscaping, we were gonna use the roof space for the landscape, for, you know, have a green space, they can grow vegetables or whatever. And we're gonna try to get a lead certificate on the building, make it energy efficient. And there would be a coffee shop deli in the, in the, on the corner, Fourth and Sibbene, a fresh roasted coffee, real good coffee. I'm kinda spoiled, I, I haven't been able to find, so we're gonna have that, and a deli. It's just a, not a light kitchen, breakfast and lunch. And, and we figure that the residents, they can go downtown, if they wanna get something to eat, use something in one of the restaurants. The interior, there's a little bit of a warehouse space there, that, that we'd like to use. I had it for a community center, some kind of activities or events or something, but I, there may be, maybe, if I put the five units in the back, it'll bring it in about, it'll be like fifty feet by thirty-something, maybe fifty by thirty-five, with a sixteen-foot ceiling, roll-up doors, the sod on that doesn't, doesn't show that, but I thought we might, and we might be able to use additional parking inside, interior parking, right in the front, so we could have a roll-up door you could pull in. And that's another, another option. We can get at least twelve, twelve parking spaces with the, for the twelve units that we're gonna put in. We were thinking twelve, twelve, actually, there's fourteen right now. There's fourteen, including my, I, I was gonna have one, and then there's a second one below me on the side, and that's on the west side. And I'll have a shop. I have, I have a, I'm, I'm a carpenter by trade, and I've been, I still tinker with woodwork. I have my table saw and everything still down in Florida, I have a shop down there, that I would like to bring all that stuff up. And there'll be a couple businesses in the, in the place, down below, at least. We have an extra, an empty tenant space, to the, if we, if you allow us to do this. And I'm just trying to do the right thing for Manistee, what's, what's gonna benefit. And so, I guess the three things are the parking, the size of it, and the multi, multi-unit. And I was kinda getting, I wanted to get your idea on that, and if there's any feedback, so I can revise the plans and not have to keep revising them. Because it's, it's expensive. And, let's see, what else? I, I mentioned the ninety degrees parking, it's possible. We may change the fourth, the fourth street, the fourth street entry. That may be a series, I'm thinking, I wanted to ask you guys, maybe a series of roll-up doors, where that just rolls up. And that can also be, if somebody later, for later use of the building, you can also just fill it in with glass, and, and, and put a door in. You know, it just, create the opening, nice, you know, architecturally, and then, but right now, we can use it for, that space, we, I don't have a use for that space at this point. Let's see. And I'm ready to start demoing, you know what I mean? So, I'd like to start gotten it. And I've talked to Steve Hoggan, I think, did I tell you the name? Steve, and he said, yeah, go for it, you know. So I'd like to do that. Right now, building doesn't have any, the water is available there, and gas is available, but they're disconnected, only electrical. We disconnected the four-eighty, I wanted that disconnected because it's dangerous for the demolition. And so, there's mixture of knob and tool. We don't know what's, we don't know what's behind all the lath and plaster, you know. So, I'll get a lot better idea once we demo it. But if we can do this, and I can get the plans, plans, we can start revising the plans. I'm trying to, I'm trying to transfer the reins from the architect into the local, I've got a couple of local architects that are interested, but they, they're busy for a few months. This project won't happen until next year. I, I don't believe, I don't think we're gonna, because of the, I wanted to, I was wanting to do it this year, but with the price of building materials, I said, forget it. You know, it's just ridiculous. It's, I, I, I don't think it's worth it. And I'm in no rush, and it would be, it's kinda like, fighting it right now. I'd rather prepare, take it easy, get it ready to go, and if you guys, and I wanna go through the process. And we would start next spring. I would think, if you allow this, it's probably only gonna, you know, I'm looking at the size of building, I've already gone through, we have, we have a structural steel that you don't have in that, I don't think. Seven months, that's it, once we start, if we have the funding. If the funding's all available, then, then we have about seven months to start to finish. I go pretty, I, we, I work pretty fast, and-
By funding, you, by funding, do you mean investors or loans?
Pardon me?
I said by funding, do you mean investors or loans?
Yeah, investors, loans. I meant, well, they mentioned grants, you know, I talked to Molly Westone and Dad, there's supposedly grant money. Look, I was retired, you know, I wasn't planning on doing this. I was real good at it, in my, in my day, and I haven't done it in a while. I'm pretty good at doing this stuff, and it's just, I'm a little rusty. And you guys, you've got some really good people here, I love the town, and so I need your help. And if we can get grant money, wonderful. I don't really care if, if the grant money with the contingencies, if the city wants to be a part owner, I don't really care. I, Cranbrook Institute down in Bloomfield Hills was interested, and taking part of the space, I met with them, but they're, to do some kinda art grant, you know, for film, or something like this, in the, in the lower floor. They're still, we're still, unfortunately, the lady, that's a director now, she's wearing three hats. She's wearing, she's head of the architecture department, head of the art department, and also the administrator. So, so we're working on it. Next week, I meet with Congressman Bergman, and so, I've done, I've done work with Congress before and gotten grants before, so. I'm just gonna keep, you know, I don't have a lot of money to do it. I can probably, it's something I haven't done in a while, but I can, we'll see what happens. And I'd just like to see it built. And I, you know, I can do a good job on it, and, and if it's worthy for this, for the city of Manistee, it provides some housing and-
What do you figure in cost on this, to-
What do you figure in cost on this to renovate it?
I figured it out in, uh, around December, of course those numbers changed. Um, I figured about a million and a half. Yeah. It's, I was gonna go steel, you know, and they're, those are inflated numbers, I mean, I, I was real generous, I, I rounded everything up. I just did ballpark figures. Hard to do, I don't like doing that, I like seeing the blueprints. When I get the blueprints, I'll know exactly, down to the nail, exactly how much it costs. I've never been over budget on a job, all the work I did with the city of Chicago, never been over budget and never been overtime. I know exactly how, how much it'll cost and I'm gonna have to get all new, oh, in the meantime, I've solicited, um, since I've been here, I've solicited, uh, a lot of the subcontractors and weeded out and talked to, uh, Mark Neeson, you guys know him, he's gonna help me with this project, he said he was willing to do it and uh, rather than me get a new license and, and a business, I probably will anyways, but Mark, um, Mark knows everybody in the area and he's been helping me, he's, he's inspected the building. And um, I was gonna try to go ste, steel and uh, post and, you know, post and beam steel. And rating heat in the floors, I'm trying to do it energy efficient, I don't know if we have enough room to put a, uh, to put a, uh, heat pump in that green strip, you know, loop, I'm not sure, I have to, I have to work with the, I haven't found anybody that does, mostly everybody wants force, force air.
So that has, does that building have an elevator in it?
Yeah, it's, it, um, it does. But it, it's not working.
Not much work.
Not gonna be repaired. I have an elevator guy in Parker, Arizona that may come up and build it, he's certified and to certify it.
Have you had an environmental study done with that property yet?
Um.
Cause it's been a myriad of auto repair, paint stripping.
It never was auto re, auto repair, it was never auto repair, auto parts.
It was an auto repair. I, I lived in that area.
Oh, really? It was auto repair?
Yep.
Well, there's no oil in the building.
Ringo, Ringo or Ringo, somebody like that.
There's no lift, there's no lift?
No, no, he did everything with a jack.
Oh.
So.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Raj Park. Yeah. Right where the, uh, upholstery machines were.
Ah. Well, all that's been removed, all that stripping stuff is all been gone, it's already been removed. Somebody came in and took it, I said, if you want it, you can have it. And they, and they moved everything out, so, and they moved all the chemicals and everything, so.
But, but the ground, gotta be said.
Yeah, well, it's kinda, I don't know, I didn't see, I, I, we can take, we can take a look, uh, and I can have an environmental study if you, if, if, if it's necessary, I don't. To me, um, you can usually smell stuff, I know it's got an oil, it's got an oil tank in the, in the basement. The basement in it is pretty bad shape, we're not sure whether we're gonna fill it in or maybe if, if, I'd actually like to have a whole full basement in the thing. But, but I don't know if it's, if, that's costly and I don't know if we can do that, so.
You have a lot of groundwater in that area?
There's.
Plus, it's clay.
It, pardon me?
Clay.
Is it? Is it? I was wondering about that, I wanted to.
Like, under, well, I'm gonna say underground streams, um, running through that area. A lot of houses have sumps.
Yeah, well, I figured, well, we'd definitely put a sump in if there was gonna be a basement, but at the, my first point, I, I figured we just fill it in, that front facade on that building, you know, and I, I was just thought I would fix that building up, that front facade, um, that hole, uh, where the entry is, I was gonna take all that out and then you could get in to the floor. The floors are all uneven, it's a balloon frame building. And um, so we don't know until we start pulling the floors up and I'm gonna salvage all the, you know, I, I, uh, I have a history of doing this, any wood or anything like that, I, nothing's in the dumpster less, it's all less than sixteen inches and so, any wood there that we're gonna, we're gonna keep and if I have to resell it for the project or, or some, there's some beams in there we may reuse for, you know, kinda like, uh, just, this is part of the bill, original building, you know how you use it, you use it and incorporate it, so. Um, there's maple flooring in the front, in the front place, um, the front building and, uh, I don't know, it, it's pretty hard to pull up flooring and reuse it to break, you know, break the tongue and the groove off, but um, we might be able to, it's usually, back then if it's old, I've worked in a lot of old buildings, it's leaded, nails are lead and so they might, they might come up pretty.
Lot of leaded paint, I can imagine it's all lead paint in that building, so.
Done it so many years, it's, yeah.
But, I mean, there's, there's some cool aspects to the inside in, in the, on the Seven Street side.
Yeah.
Lot of old shelves and cubbies and things like that that are in that.
Well, they took the shelves out.
Well, they did.
Yeah, before the building, that was a bad deal with Jenny, uh, yeah, it was not good, it was, that was supposed to come with the building. And, and the next thing, I know I came back up a, a week later waiting on the, they're gone. So, I think they had an auction, yeah, they had an auction there and I was, before my time and uh, I think somebody had bought them and then they came back after the fact, after I had put a deposit down and, and they took some things out, you know, so, and I put a, I tried to put a kibosh on it right then, so. I'm just curious, I mean, I can come back, you guys can take a look at this, I just wanted to feel this and kinda see what your views are on, on putting a building like this in that area. I mean, otherwise I'll just fix it up and, and uh, you know, uh, fix it up and I got a big shop, you know, that's really not usable.
No, in, in that corridor, in the old highway, because Seven Street is the old highway. I think there's been a movement to try and help these areas.
Yeah, I think it's a great neighborhood, I love it there.
You know, if, God bless you if you can do it.
I mean, we can do it.
Um, it would be, it would be nice to have a coffee shop.
Yeah.
I work right up the street, so.
And then, well, you have to, Mick mentioned, well, the deli, maybe, he said maybe make that separate, a Polish deli or something, I guess, uh, and I said, oh, you know, but I don't know how, uh, I don't know if we can, I, I don't know if people in the neighborhood, do they make, um, can you resell, I've never, this is out of my department, can you resell homemade food, canned goods and sausage and these kinda things?
As long as it's, if it's commercially produced, you can sell it. And there are commercial sausage makers and things like that in, in Manistee.
Oh, there are, okay. But I mean, people from the residents, they can, you can't resell, like, you can't do it?
There are, there, it is possible, but they have to have their, their kitchens have to be certified by the state, they have to be.
I figured.
The answer is yes, however.
Always the however. I mean, I wonder if you can do with it, don't, instead of selling it, donation?
No.
Yeah, do it like.
You can't, you can't distribute food, um, commercially like that unless it's coming from a certified, the, the.
Cause my mom's.
Place has to be, uh, inspected by the state and approved.
I mean, I, we, I was raised on a farm in Lower Michigan, we can, we can stuff and canning jars and no problems, you know.
Well, you could add a German deli to that, I mean, that.
Pardon me?
German deli.
German, hey, whatever, you know, I, I'm open to suggestions on, I, I really, you know, I could, I need your help on this and, and I, I kinda just, what do you think about the building, if, if, if we were to, would you, do you agree with the parking? I mean, it's been there.
Do they agree with the parking?
No. We can't, we can't, this, just like the parking with, and it's great Jeff's here, but it's, it's technically city property. Um, and we can't, we can't give them permission to put.
Building is right on the property.
You know, to put parking and, and then utilize it for their own needs unless there's an agreement entered into with the city. So like, that's a problem that we're running into with any kinda granting of this, this project moving forward is, uh, there's certain steps of this that have to be resolved and you guys cannot give permission for them to enter into that agreement that only the city council can.
Oh, city, so I have to go to a different, I have to go somewhere else?
They, they can also grant, uh, approval with the stipulation that you go to city council and get that, that, uh, that agreement.
Council.
So, you, so it. Yeah, it's, it, once you've got a plan that meets the requirements and, um, we move through a special use and, and public hearing and, and everything along those lines, then they can make stipulations on it. Um, but the first step is, is really, you're, you're here canvassing the board to say, hey, does this sound like a good idea to you guys, would you support this? Um, and if they say yes, that's kind of like a, um, it's a good idea to move forward with your, putting some money into more plan development. Um, cause you're, you're not there quite yet, unless I'm wrong, Zach.
Close.
So very close, so, um, but there's certain things that you could come in requesting, but knowing that you're not gonna get approval from, from, uh, the planning commission on those aspects of it, so, um, the first step would be, you know, at the same time, my, my suggestion would be that you're working on your plans is to work with Mark Miller, um, to get you on city council's agenda to discuss the parking with them, um, maybe not enter and do an agreement, but let them become aware, that you're, you're gonna be seeking this and I think Jeff's got a comment, but.
I have permission from the chair. So, the vehicle that private properties utilize city properties through a license agreement gives the, the property, gives the private property the ability to use and occupy city space, so if, um, so what, the normal course would be for you to go forward to the council and, and, or go forward to the city and ask to use that right-of-way space. A couple things that come to my mind immediately is, uh, Fourth Street is one of the narrowest streets in the city.
Yeah, that's.
Front main, we're going to the east, so whenever I get the ability, and it's predicated on funding for water main upgrade, but once we get funding for the water main upgrade and we rebuild that street, it'll likely widen out. So, that future with the street would need to be taken into account with how much space is between, you know, available between the side and the current sidewalk and what that proposed road width would be, that would be the first thing. The second thing is, especially again, we have to worry a lot about snow.
We'll, we'll take care of all that.
So we've got alternate parking and so what we would also do and when I review this, an application like this, is I would look at the property across the street and if that property does not have off-street parking and needs to have its tenants park on the street, they wouldn't be able to park on the opposite side for alternate parking if we licensed the front of that to other vehicles. And then, just as a practical matter, um, you would have to remove the snow from your parking spaces, but I would give you a crap load every day. And that becomes a real big conflict for your tenants.
Well, I figured we'd have a property, somebody there every day.
So, those are just the type of things that I would consider if I was reviewing.
Right, and. And, and to be, and to be fair, this is, again, not an application, uh, and.
To get a feel.
And normally, when we get a, a completed application, we take it to Jeff who would then make these suggestions.
Site plan review committee.
And site plan review committee, this would come out, but, um, this is just a canvassing, like, hey, was this something you would support, but yeah.
Well, you see, my problem is, I, it sounds to me like, um, Mike and Zach want me to have these prints all read, all done and then it goes to see whether the parking is gonna pass. And it's, it's a, it's a lot of money, I mean, for the prints, you know, or fifty, sixty, upwards of a hundred thousand dollars for the prints.
And we'd support him going in to resolve the, the, the parking with, uh, city council and seeing if they would be willing to enter into that without, but we have really no authority to do that, so, um.
That's the thing, I mean, without the parking, you guys may say, well, you can't do the building, right?
Right.
Right, and then.
You don't, yeah.
You follow what I'm saying, so that, so how do we, how can we, how can I, how can we do this?
It's, it's a very fair question because if there isn't enough parking available without simply parallel parking up, you know, on the street, then that affects.
Right. And if it comes in as a special use permit, the other issue is, like, we can't waive those requirements, like, if he's not meeting them, then we can't do anything. However, there is a big push, especially in Northern Michigan, to approve apartment condos and whatever else without parking. So, I'm not saying that, you know, um, it should, it should be, but it is something to, to think about too, like, you know, if he comes in under a different way, um, then that might be a way to do it, but right now, we can't waive the requirements on that, so it, it, it basically be, comes like, can he, can he move forward with the process? No, cause he needs to know the parking situation.
So, in order to do something like this, currently there are requirements to supply parking?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it's not to say that, it's not to say that.
You can park wherever, you can park blocks away.
It's, and it's not to say that he couldn't put those in with his plan, I mean, he's doing an addition on it, he would just have to change the footprint of the building and add those additional parking spots, but if that's not truly his vision or, you know, that's not, that, from a planning department aspect, that's not really our problem, it's a, you know, you're just, can't do it cause you're not meeting the ordinance, so like, you're, you're gonna have to provide the parking and not the addition. However, um, if he can enter into an agreement with the city and he can show that, then he's met the parking requirement as far as we're concerned.
How many units?
Yeah, the concept, I said, I like the concept, but you did mention possibility of putting a parking inside in that back end.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I hate that.
And I mean, in, the other aspect of it with, with what Mark brought up with the environmental and stuff like that, I mean, there is some concern there. And Zach and I were kinda speedily looking through like the forms and stuff, we didn't see, you know, it being a requirement to, to have those studies done as part of a special use permit. Um, however, you know, we could just be missing it right now, so, uh, we're kinda putting ourselves on the spot looking for it, but we, we were unable to locate it, so that, that could be another reason why these weren't done. But within an old industrial area, you know, it might be something that, you know, you guys wouldn't permit without that stipulation that they have that, so.
Is there?
A phase one is not overtly expensive.
Together, so that's where some of the, uh, the other options come forward because you have brownfield, you have resources literally that the city has already set aside to make buildings that are in, that have challenges like this happen to get a rebirth.
Right, I, I'm not saying that there, there isn't things put in there, I'm just saying like, the requirements that we have to look at, it, it may or may not be in there, we have to review it, but so far we're not firing, finding it and that, that goes back to the other previous, um, transfer where, you know, well, why wasn't this looked at? Well, typically when there's non-residential things, it's not something that we're really looking at, but with residents being in this place, we would definitely wanna phase one at least done to know what's there.
So I have a remedial question because I just don't know.
I mean, I would agree to, all the maintenance on that, uh, the whole thing, I didn't know about, why you think, I was wondering about that, because you can't really tell where the edge of the street is.
But really what this is, is a canvas, so like, I mean, it, it, it's really, I think his, his next thing would be to get on city council and then to request, you know, the, you know, the, the parking that he's gonna need and require and see if they're willing to do that, but, um, and then that's a major hurdle for him, then he can do his addition and he can move forward, but, really like you guys, it's just, yes, you would support a project like this or no, and then he can take that the city council and site planning commission would generally support this project if, you know, one of the project hurdles I'm running into is the parking. So that's kinda why we run him forward. Uh, we didn't anticipate a complete presentation, but, uh, we're here, we're doing it, let's, let's continue on, um, and then, uh, but that's generally what he's here for, guys.
Parking and then the height is, the height of it, three stories with a garden roof on top.
Being an issue necessarily.
We're gonna put an elevator in it, new elevator for handicapped and disabled if they.
So the planning commission has the ability to approve, I think, what, up to fifty feet?
I don't know.
Okay, um, I will look it up, but I'm pretty sure you guys have the ability to approve a higher than normal structure limit.
I thought the normal was, I thought the highest was sixty-five.
Things that are.
It might be higher than what I'm saying.
Well, what, the higher, the parts that are higher are the little, uh, the houses for the elevator.
Right.
Up to the roof, this area, the houses, the stairs that go up to the roof.
So, so they're.
Six up higher.
You guys do have the ability, so, but really, realistically, like, one thing I think we need to move forward is, let's try to resolve the parking and say like, hey, they would be willing to enter into an agreement, let them go to city council on that. But if you guys generally support this project, if you don't, you think, no, no, I don't support it, then you should say to such, but really this is a canvassing. It's, it's not necessarily that, uh, you guys have to agree to anything, nor should you. It's just generally, do you, do you, and then he can take that, the city council saying like, listen, I've been through this, I've been through that. Um, we put together a memo, Mark would sign just saying, you know, he canvassed us, we generally look favorably upon this if that's the way that, and then he can take that forward. Now, without, without additional site plans as of like parking requirements or something like that, city council might wanna see more, so I'm just warning you, Steve, that you, you know, you're coming into city council and you're just saying, well, I generally need parking. They're, they're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna look at that favorably, they're gonna say, what do you want?
I understand.
And I want details, cause.
Parking have to be site or adjacent or can it be?
It has to be within two hundred feet.
Okay, that's not very far.
Did you see the revised ones that I sent?
I, I have not reviewed this since the original. Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, yes, yes.
Yes.
If you have, it's, it's three, yes, I have them.
But, but.
Yeah.
So, so just to.
Thanks, Mike, you really, you summed it up, thank you, I appreciate it, cause you guys know the problem.
Well, yeah. So, um.
So, for me, that, just to kinda get this moving along, because it is getting late.
Okay.
I, I like the idea of housing in, in the Maxwell Town area and I think that, that. I, I like the idea of housing in, in the Maxwelltown area. And I think that, that-
It's not Maxwelltown.
Or, well, it's, uh-
It's not Maxwelltown.
That's further south, isn't it?
Okay. Well, that's-
We had that discussion.
In the proximity of Maxwelltown.
Area of Manistee, and, and to have it, have a, a resurgence with, with new businesses and housing, I think is a great idea. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I support it in concept. Um, I, like we mentioned before, I think the, the fair thing is to look at where you can provide parking, uh, indoor parking. And again, and, and if you look at it, you know, this is a winner.
I know, I know.
Some of those clients would be happy to pay to have a place that, but, but-
It's possible on that, you know, the front of the, uh, Forest Street, that building, instead of, we went in a bank of Ford rollups. They could roll, they could pull in and just, I hate to, that's what a waste of space for parking, you know what I mean?
But, but I will tell you, when we were looking at designing a senior center building, um, on the other side of, uh, river, on, uh, Memorial Drive. The concept was that half of the front would be retail and the other half would be underground part, would be under parking. And then if you think about it, you might be able to do that on the backside, have the parking coming in on the back, rather than, and then have your retail going across the front side of Forest Street. But, but-
That's, that's the only green space on the, on the place. It's kinda nice in the back, on the north side. And I kinda, if you, if you wanted residents, like you guys said, some extra smaller, and, and is there a limit now? It's 500?
I'd have the check. I, I don't know it off the top of my head. I just-
We're gonna have a beautiful green space for you, because they're building a beautiful park at Morton Park for us. And that's, that's only about 300 feet away, so.
Oh, the one on, uh, towards Morton's Hall?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
Well, I, well, let's, okay, let's, let's, we could talk all night, but I think, I think generally we have a favorable view here.
Okay.
I just have one thing I don't like.
Okay.
I really don't like the short-term rental being added in there. I would rather see it include-
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I didn't know whether you guys wanted, uh, sales or rental. You know, they mean it could be permanent residence.
We, we need places for people.
So I, that was the other thing. What, what do you think about that?
That could be a stipulation when it comes back through you guys, that it is, um, of over 30-day rentals, no short terms, or something like that.
It could be, yeah, it could be, it could be permanent residence. And what do you, I mean, what would you prefer? It doesn't matter to me.
Well, let's, let's not go there now.
Go there now?
Okay. But conceptually, I think we were in favor of it to help generate, help renovate that, that old highway corridor.
Okay.
Okay? And, and adding a coffee shop and, and residence. Great. We wish you the best of luck with city council.
Okay. Oh, um, can you guys get me on the calendar as soon as possible?
That's not up to us.
Yeah, so, well, the, really the development director, Mark Miller, should, should be, but we'll, we'll reach out to him with the memo once Mark signs it. And then, um, just generally saying that, like, hey, they're, they're favorable upon it. And then we'll ask him to put you on the agenda and he can, you can, you can go with him up there, um, so that, you know, while we'll be there, so we can kinda take questions as well. But, um, typically, it's gonna be through the development director that that would go through. Um, but we will, you know, you can check with us.
Tomorrow or Monday? What, what's the better?
Well, well, I'm out of the office and there's a fourth on Monday, so, but late, late next week, um, we should have that out. Don't, not Tuesday, but Tuesday, we're gonna be swamped. Um, but Mark, like, uh, he's gonna generate the memo. Mark's gonna probably sign it late or early next week. Um, and then, late this week, early next week. And then, you know, you can look to be added to the agenda after that. Um, city council will either move you around with what they have going on, and I can't control that. We, we'll just ask that Mark makes that request.
Okay. It's just, you see, what I, I just wanna go keep going like this back and forth and playing ping pong with our, it's just money, you know? And, and, oh, thanks you guys. It's been an honor. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. And, uh, I hope it works out. Um, and how do you get a recording of this?
It's always posted. It's, uh, it's posted on the, um, there's a YouTube channel out there that posts all city meetings. And it's always, I think it's posted on the city website as well.
I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Thanks you guys. Thanks so much. Thank you.
All right. After that, so staff reports.
Well, well, we never actually did public comment.
Anyone in the public that would like to have a comment? Please approach the podium. I'm Linda, but.
Okay.
Name?
Linda.
Name and address.
256 Hughes Street. I'm also on city council. I think the best thing for this gentleman to do is to get in touch with Mark Miller and make a presentation to city council on 15th. We have a work session there. That would be the soonest he could get on agenda. And then if we needed to vote on something, if it could be worked up between the 13th and the 20th, we could vote on it on the 20th. So I'm just giving you what I think would be a rough timeline, uh, to get in front of city council. That's all I have to say, believe it or not.
Anyone else? Sir?
59.
As long as your brains are fresh.
That will be down and out soon.
You want, you want?
No.
No? Okay.
Unless you have any questions.
No. No questions, so we'll move along. Anybody else? Okay, that's closed. Staff reports.
I have nothing.
No, generally good right now, so.
Nancy?
Nope.
Nothing, okay. Member discussion? Bob?
Oh, well, it's nice to be back in person, and you guys all have a good Fourth of July holiday.
I'm all disgusted.
Shelley?
Happy Independence Day and thank you for anybody's service and hope everybody has a wonderful weekend.
I have nothing, but thank you, everyone, staff. So with that, we will make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, and at 8:58.